Hello?
Best of luck, brother.
With what?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not gonna conflict you. I'm just, just gonna say best of luck, alright?
Alright.
Alright. Good morning, K.
Well, we sure have a lot to catch up on, don't we?
Hello? Howdy? I just, uh, I just got back up. I'm heading on over to the, uh, to the meeting.
Where's the meeting?
Uh, hold on. I don't wanna say out loud, cuz it's, is it not?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's at my house. You know where my house is, right?
No, I should, I should be good. I'm, I'm a car here. So I'll be up there in just a few minutes.
So you got treason, sir? Is that what you said?
Uh, hold on.
I'm, I'm not sure I believe so. That's what they did say they were doing, but I haven't seen any paperwork or anything. I don't know how I meant to know this.
Who put you on the hut charge? Was it Decker?
Uh, no, I'm actually unsure. But again, I don't know who's actually processed the charges or, or done it myself. It seemed, uh, Bones started, but I believe somebody put their hand right up his asshole because he doesn't have a spine and used their hand as a spine to, uh, puppet what they wanted to say because he didn't have the balls to do it, I guess.
Sounds about right. Sounds about right.
Yeah, that's fine with me, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, man, I don't, I don't know what happened while it was gone. I've, I've no idea what happened while it was gone, but, uh, I do know this. I got a city council meeting that I gotta go to right now cuz I'm the PD liaison, so they're probably gonna talk about some shit, so. We haven't had one in three weeks, so it's gonna be a big one. They're waiting on me. But, uh, I wanna come see you cuz I heard about that shit and I was like, what the hell's happening?
Yeah, could you do me a favor and just maybe ask, uh, where, where the documentation or legislation is for the due process and how court proceedings work? Because I haven't been informed of anything and I can't get to an MDT to even read the law and I have no idea what's happening, uh, at this point in time. I've been shown no evidence and, uh, I'm just here with my finger in my ass. In fact, the thing I've been told about evidence is they don't need to give me a reason why I'm being, uh, put in jail. The long redhead, uh...
Okay, yeah. Now, they're, they're bitchin' moanin' at me.
Okay, I just need to, I just need any documentation you can get from the legislation and the judicial process if you can through the MDT at some point. That'd be great if you could help me out, Cornwood, because I've got no idea what I meant to do.
Yeah, we gotta have like some, at, at least like a computer or something in here so you can, you can access that shit.
Well, I mean, you know, they could also just come and serve me with paperwork, I guess.
Yeah, no, that's fair. Okay.
But it's saying that, like I said, I, I don't know the, I don't know the legislation, but if I'm gonna defend myself in a courtroom, I need to know that, know that stuff. So if it's all possible, you could, uh, send me the legislation somehow, I'd be greatly appreciative of that.
Sir, sorry to interrupt, but Kay's asking for you.
Am I sir?
Yeah.
Oh, uh, I, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay. Oh, uh, come on out.
That works cuz I gotta get going anyway. But, uh, yeah, serving you at least some papers or some shit, that's a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
I'll, I'll come find you in like, uh, I'll come, I'll come talk to you more, uh, in like...
Yeah, yeah, listen, I know how long a meeting's gonna go. We'll see you in four, five hours, but it's okay. You do what you need to do, sir.
Okay.
Alan, you saw the phone?
Yes.
Whoa, who are you talking to?
Uh, Fiona Stewart.
Hmm, hmm. Didn't you have a bounty on her recently on Twitter from, uh, Pigeon?
Pigeon put a bounty on her?
Yeah, forty K.
Forty thousand?
Every mention of Los Santos is now a mention of San Andreas.
Great, I actually wrote that and did that already, just in case, if we want to.
Because, uh, for some reason, people are putting stock in the, uh, ramblings of a crazy ex-police trooper.
Who, why, what?
Uh, I got, yeah.
What about him?
I gotta go to the bathroom, y'all saw it.
He's doing a sovereign citizen thing where he is, uh, he is challenging the authority of the government because of, uh, certain mentions in legislation that, uh, only includes Los Santos and not the entirety of the island.
Alan, Sose is doing this, is, is repeating the same thing that Nathan was in January and shit. We did.
I do think that needs clarification.
Since we, he also thinks he's still created a government in Los Santos and there are no other governments in the state, what, what is the issue?
Well, I think, I think it does deserve clarification cuz like, is a mayor of a state, you know? It, it, it is a valid, like, murkiness, you know? That, that should be, you know, it should be included to the state or not be included to the state. I agree. Cuz I put Los Santos in my thing just cuz I don't, I don't know which it is. A lot of the shit does say Los Santos.
Why don't we just decide?
What are we a state of?
I don't know.
Government.
Well, I guess we better figure that out since we're figuring everything out. What are we a state of, guys?
State of people?
Is it the US? Does that mean we gotta follow US federal law?
No, no, we're an independent territory of the United States like Guam.
So we do have to follow federal law?
No.
So we don't?
We don't. We follow some. We pick and choose.
Max, all you.
We're like caf, we're like cafeteria Catholics, okay? We pick and choose the parts we wanna believe. I don't understand why it's so difficult for these Nolan Christians to figure out.
So why are we changing Los Santos, San Andreas?
I don't think it's necessary, but we could. I'll put it that way. Why would we do it, Alan? Because there's a lot of really stupid people in the city who need things spelled out for them at a fifth grade level, not the college reading level.
Every single person who's ever been charged with a crime in Sandy or Polito is now innocent?
No.
Why?
Why would they be?
That's, that's the argument he's making.
Yeah, that's the argument Sose is making.
So why are we changing it?
I think we need to, but I did it in case we wanted to.
Do you not, uh, why do you think we don't have to change it?
Why would I do something that's not necessary?
Who is this Sose?
Unimportant.
He, he's a guy that a lot of people idolize and worship for almost any discernible reason.
Shot the tires on my car one time when it was parked.
Let me ask you this. One of the first actions we ever took was, or I ever took, was before, uh, the city council's even formed and we just, on behalf of the state, changed all the speed limits.
Got Cornwood.
And then the city council came in and then changed the speed limits that the state had set. So does that mean that all the speed limits in Polito and Sandy are invalid?
Howdy. Sorry about that, y'all.
No worries, Cornwood. Here's what you missed. Uh, we're discussing the topic at hand of, uh, stuff regarding the constitution having Los Santos put in writing, um, rather than the state of San Andreas. Uh, why we're discussing this is because Kale Sose is in a hut, um, in prison on a hut for treason for this topic and trying to incite others into rebellion against the state. That's why we're discussing it.
Yeah, I, uh, I, I kinda have the, uh, the gist of it, but I have basically no idea what's going on.
If our laws don't apply to Polito and Sandy, does that mean that there's no law?
Uh, no. I mean, obviously, I say no. That's what Sose is saying. He's saying otherwise.
What law would apply?
Common law? State law?
What, what's the state law?
Well, according to the Article Two and Article One of the Constitution, the laws of the state are designated and legislated by the city council. Heyo!
Weird, so it al, it almost sounds like we don't need to change anything.
Yeah, I wrote out a whole essay, Crane, explaining this and like going through the rationalization of why nothing needs to change.
Okay, um, I need you to sum in that essay so I can, uh, make... ...who were instilled with a great sense of doubt after speaking to a man who thought he was trapped in the fictional Stranger Things, uh, upside down for five years.
Oh, no, that shit was real. Siobhan and I got him out of there. We spent like two weeks pulling him out.
We, it took us a while to get him upside down. Okay, well, Max doesn't believe, so...
Yeah, I mean, Siobhan, me, on fire, and then like eight other officers. We saw him come out. Man, we pulled his ass out of there. We spent forever trying to get him out.
You know, a long time ago, I saw something similar, so I believe you.
If you can, if you consider for a moment, that never happened?
Um, I mean, there's a report on it.
Cool.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
It's five nine nine nine. It's Man Bear on roof of MRPD. Uh, there's photos of me and Siobhan in there and, you know, we see the, uh, yep, there it is. There's his, there's his Class Two that he had, the whole thing. There's a couple of things missing, but that shit happened.
Uh... What?
Yeah, you guys had to use a bunch of tasers to get him out of the, where the OG Rift was in Win Song's trailer. That shit was wild.
Yeah, like, we, it was, it was crazy as shit. So we, we tased like all the batteries and then I, no, they tased me.
Then you fell on the batteries or whatever. Yeah, that's what it was.
And then, and then I shocked the batteries and then it, it opened the rift and then he showed up.
Uh, TLDR, Max. I don't, I don't care.
Hey, did you know Darkin Darkers on...
You guys wanna appease a bunch of fucking knuckle-dragging, mouth-breathing morons by changing some words, then so be it.
Um, I mean...
That's why I love Crane.
Well, see, it's gonna, it's gonna go down to a DOJ decision, right? So, I mean, if you have faith that they'll, uh, uphold common sense and logic, then...
Doesn't matter if you, they, the decision would come from the law as it was at the time of the offense.
Yeah, no, 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 I, 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 yeah, well, I'm saying, if we don't change it, do you have faith in your judges to uphold the common sense and logic that the law dictates?
Thank you!
I, I don't care. Turtle, shove the hell up!
Uh, where were we? Oh, yeah, I don't care. Yeah. I'm fine with changing words. If you guys wanna change words, I'm, to me, it really doesn't change anything, but...
Really sorry about that, everybody. Sorry about that interruption. What'd I miss?
Hmm, I mean, if you change anything, it, it's still like, uh, the old shit, like whatever it was at the time of Sose's thing would still apply.
Look, I know that. I was not implying that I did not know that.
Well, I wasn't implying that you didn't know that.
Oh, my God. Are we trying to say that if we change it to state of San Andreas in the constitution, that it would somehow make Sose's claims valid? Because it doesn't.
Chantistagnar.
I don't think that we even need to change it either per se. We could just add one addendum in there for clarity, right? It is clarifying. It is not changing anything in the law. We could just add a clarity thing in there. But at the end of the day, I don't think it needs to be done because I think the judiciary knows how to do their jobs. And if Sose wants to deny the authority of the judiciary, which it sounds like he's essentially doing, I don't know. It's just further treason then.
I mean, I don't know. I, I do, I do, I do think we need to change it.
No, we don't. We don't.
I'm indifferent.
Cornwood, have you arrested someone in Sandy and Polito?
Yeah, I have.
Okay, lock up Cornwood. He committed war crimes.
He committed war crimes. Alright, we're gonna put you in prison now cuz that's what Sose wants.
Stupid this line of thinking is.
No, no, I understand, but what I'm saying is we can just change it.
I'm not giving credence to the mad man's ramblings.
We don't have to deal with this shit anymore.
No, cuz if we change it, then we're giving credence to a mad man's ramblings and we're not going to do that. The same way we're not going to fucking negotiate with terrorists.
Look, I, I, I think that you should do the following. I think that it should, I think you should amend it, but then you should also like put out a press release that literally says, none of this is actually necessary, but because some people, you know, get their fucking civics lessons off the back of the fucking ingredients they use to make their own meth at home, that somehow we need to like parse this out for you, so here you go.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta stupid proof it.
Crane, amen. Great, maybe we just add a glossary for morons. Oh, wait, this meeting's not being recorded. I can finally be as condescending as I please. Oh, thank God. Yeah, we'll put a glossary for all the idiots who can't read above a fourth grade and reading level. Perfect, easy. And then a state announcement letting them know that all the fourth grade reading level people have now been taken account. We didn't wanna pander to lowest common denominator, but we've been forced to by morons. Huh.
So, so what, uh, where would this be written?
Article, what is it? It's, what, seven is down your ground. Article eight? Add an article eight of the constitution? We just do an amendment on it, which is the very bottom?
I kinda like not doing anything.
I like not doing anything as well because it doesn't need to be done.
Alright, so we've sold you on not doing anything. Alright, don't do anything.
Yeah, alright, I mean, I was sold after Alan explained it. I get it. Cool, donezo.
Okay, I'm good either way. I'm, I'm just trying to stupid proof this thing. That's all I was saying.
To Crane's point, it is a slippery slope that we will continue to careen down and have to overly micromanage the wording of things.
You can't stupid proof, okay? Stupid people know, there's no limit to their stupidity. You cannot stupid proof. You can ignorant proof, but not stupid proof, cuz you can fix ignorant, but you can't fix stupid.
What do you think, Glenn?
He's one man, a single person who has no authority. What's the problem?
True.
True.
I mean, he's a state trooper.
He's not a state trooper. He's not! Nobody's former employment is considered carried over. Otherwise, I'm still a judge, okay?
Well, is that, is that not written? And is that written anywhere?
Doesn't make it true.
Oh, my God.
This is the fucking dumbest shit I've ever heard. Oral notice is not required when a state entity disown.
Did the government collapse? Yes or no, Cornwood?
Yeah, I suppose so.
Did you have to be manually rehired when you came back to Los Santos? Yes or no?
I just kinda walked in the building.
Yeah, okay, sure, that happened.
He's a retired trooper of another country.
I was, I was behind the desk and, and Slacks was like, how the hell did you get back there? Who are you? And I said, well, I'm Captain Cleese Cornwood, Captain BCSO.
Okay.
It was a homeless person outside making the same points when you listen.
Let's follow this, let's follow this to its logical conclusion. Why did you have to campaign for a sheriff's office for six months if you were from the BCSO?
Well, because I got, you know, I got removed and I got moved to the, uh...
When did you get removed?
Whenever I came back into town, Captain Slacks moved me to the LSPD.
Okay, so he took you out of a sheriff's office organization that existed.
Uh-huh.
So why was, did one have to be created then for both?
Well, cuz they got rid of it.
Who?
Oh, them.
Who's them?
Shit, I still don't know.
So you think that this sheriff's organization still existed when you got fired, but then in between you getting moved to the OSPD and the new election happening to create a sheriff's office, it was destroyed? And you don't know who did this or why, but you're sure of this timeline?
Well, I'm at the state or something, I'm assuming, whenever the government collapsed.
Oh, so it happened before the collapse?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Is that you got rid of the office and shit.
So then you weren't a sheriff when you came back?
I mean, maybe. I mean, I, I walked into that place. I just did what I, you know, I just did what I always do.
Yeah, maybe we do need to actually change the language.
Oh, my God. No, no.
I love you, Cornwood.
No, I'm putting my foot down.
Well, I mean, if a, if a sitting city council member doesn't understand the temporal relationship of like spacetime and events on a timeline, then what's the point? I mean, we might as well just spell it out.
This loophole shit has the potential to be abused hardcore. I mean, it's being abused right now.
Yeah, okay, but functionally, it goes to the judiciary. Who wouldn't?
By, by who? Totally. It's gonna get abused, yeah, totally. By the other people who are gonna show up with a M4 with a 60 round mag.
No, 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 what, 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 what I'm saying is that it has the potential to be abused by you and me, Siobhan, Murphy, Cornwood. These loopholes are being abused by someone who thinks that he has, I don't know, some sort of power over the government. What's to stop us from using those loopholes? Just food for thought.
Well, that's a good point.
Why do you wanna close those loopholes? Keep them open.
Okay, I'm claiming the, I'm claiming the sheriff's office is mine now.
Okay, I'm suspending, I, uh, I'm, I'm suspending all mayoral elections and I'm appointing myself governor.
Oh, shit, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the governor of San Andreas now.
Okay, well, good shit. Congratulations.
And you guys are, you guys are, you guys are my, uh, you guys are my, uh, advisors now.
I'm retiring and I expect my house in Mayor Park is compensation.
Well, I mean, as gov, as governor of San Andreas, the whole state is, budget is mine now, so, I mean, Glenn, if it's cool with you, I would like to buy Alan Crane a house.
Okay, well, there's a system for that.
Well, yeah, as the governor of San Andreas, I think that, uh, there shouldn't be a system.
Yo, pay my... And slow down. We can't do that.
The PD owes me like three hundred fifty thousand for Air One.
Yeah, I, I got you, bro. We got like a hundred million dollars in the city account right now.
Okay.
Uh, we're balling out of control.
I don't like that.
I'm a big fan of this.
Glenn, what's the problem, bro?
It's not good. We need that money.
For what?
The government.
We are the government!
To sit on, to get the high score?
No, we gotta keep the island running.
Yeah, well, look, we can keep it running. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna, look, you know, as, as the mayor before I was appointed governor, I had a lot of, uh, firsthand experience with the way the, you know, money was used and whatnot. Look, we can totally, we'll have money to spare times a million.
Yeah, nine figures is nothing to scoff.
I'm gonna need more convincing.
Yeah, I don't know. What do you guys feel about, uh, seceding from, uh, the federal government and just appointing ourselves?
You guys think about, uh, you know, at one time treasurer bonus, you know, relieve treasurer bonus? You know, maybe, maybe a nice little, uh, compensation package for taking the job short notice, you know?
Yeah, look, you got, you got it, bro. You got it.
I don't know.
Let's secede from the federal government, dude. Let's do it. I've been a lot of questions recently about who the state is, you know? Who's, who's John State? Who's, who's John State, bro?
What do you mean? John State is our founder.
John State, our founder. I don't know if he's real or not. I actually don't know. I mean, I'm receiving conflicting, I'm receiving conflicting points, you know?
The same way George Washington totally chopped down that cherry tree and said he cannot tell a lie, John State is real.
No, if only that was Abraham Lincoln.
Abraham Lincoln is different. He was known as Honest Abe though, but the cherry tree was George Washington. Yeah. Anyway, Ja, John State, George Washington, same guy as far as I'm concerned.
What if I become the state?
Yeah, why not?
I thought you already, I thought you already are an agent of the state.
No, I mean, Crane and I are agents of the state, you know? We've, we've always been enforcing the, uh, the will of the state. We've been in constant contact with the state too, nonstop. Over any, any big decision that was ever going to be pushed forward or made in the present, future, and past, we were always in communication with the state.
Can I be the director of the CIA?
No.
What, what the fuck?
Glenn's vote.
But so, do they exist or not, guys? I feel like we gotta figure that out.
Yes, it exists.
And you have to believe in it.
Like Santa Claus?
I don't know. I don't know.
We have the power to override the state's vetoes though, right, Crane? You put that in the constitution and super majority, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
Alan, is it true that we were, uh, always in constant contact with the state?
I don't know. Are you lying? Did you just make that up?
Nah, I, I just, I wanna, I wanna hear it. I wanna hear him say it. I wanna hear him say it. Were we not?
Maybe, maybe they were just lying. Maybe they weren't the state.
What, are you telling me that maybe we got bamboozled by like some Uzbekistan phone scammers every single time we went to go talk to these guys about big decisions that were gonna be made? Holy fuck!
I mean, maybe. They said the sheriff's office opened three months before it was ready. Other way around, or something or other. I don't know.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
Well, fuck, man. We got like millions of people to care about here, you know? We gotta, we gotta think about the future, right?
We have to do what's best for them.
Even when they don't know what's best for them, we do.
Well, I mean, this leads me to my...
Yeah, nobody really knows what's best for them. People are usually harmful to their own cause.
Yeah, but I think we know what's best for them.
Yeah, well, we do.
I mean, I...
I do know what's best for them.
Or accurate.
There's a really good point to make here on a legislation I was thinking about pushing. It's called the Cornwood Continuity Plan, the CCP.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We, we could talk about that a little bit later, but it's, you know, basically if anything ever goes wrong, I, you know, I have, you know, full, you know, jurisdiction to fix it.
Yeah, I presented a continuity plan for DOC that gives it to the sheriff's office too.
Uh-huh.
Look, I think we need to address the elephant in the room first, or the elephant not in the room, rather.
Yeah.
Solomon.
Impeach him like anybody else.
We're impeaching him. It's happening.
Yeah, but without the fucking city council gets to do its shit.
Boring. You wanted to go on the docket?
Yeah, it should, like anything else.
Getting flashbacks, Crane. I'm getting flashbacks.
Don't start making kangaroo courts just cuz it serves your purpose.
I'm getting flashbacks. A bunch of fucking impeachment things going up on the docket.
Hey, Siobhan.
Yeah, Max?
This is why I, uh, I did that thing yesterday.
Which thing?
I'll text you.
Okay.
What are the grounds for impeachment?
It's in the legislation.
Yeah, it's in there.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I, I immediately thought of it right before I got it. Yep, yep, yep. Uh, thank God for you, Max. Thank God.
Yeah, we do a little future-proofing. Anyway, alright, Alan and I, we're gonna, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna get ahold of the FIB. We're gonna get some phone trackers to figure out who these people we've been talking to are and we're gonna get, we're gonna, we're really gonna puzzle this one out and, and, and like, and, you know, fucking figure out
D time.
if the state is real or not, guys.
Okay, sounds good.
Great. If the state's not real, does that mean I set up an entire system and got run by myself?
Yeah.
Wow, you're pretty cool. Holy shit.
You could be the czar.
Yeah.
Wow, I could've, I could've just told everyone that I was the president and they would've believed me. Wow.
That's what Eugene Zerber did.
I mean, let's be fair, some people do think you're the president.
Power is derived by the consent of the governed.
They treat you the same way that the couple of the idiots I encountered treating Kale Sose.
I feel like, uh, I feel like you're seeing one of those movies where they go back in time to like medieval age, but they still got their cellphone?
Oh, yes.
I feel like that guy, except my cellphone is just reading comprehension.
That's why the first line of my essay on this topic, Crane, was literally that this needs to be spelled out for people with reading comprehension failures.
Yeah, yeah, so TLDR, do whatever you guys think is best. I'll vote whatever way you think. I, I think it's all useless, but I think the people are morons, so, you know?
Yeah.
You did tell me seventy percent of the people in the city are really fucking stupid and I have to agree.
They're either dumb or unserious, so what are you gonna do in either case?
Oh, my God, hi, everyone!
So you guys understand why my position is that impeachment should be public, correct?
Uh-huh, I do.
No, I absolutely do.
What, what's the argument against that?
Oh, I mean, we can just do whatever we want behind closed doors. Transparency and accountability in government are good things.
Yeah, but I'm saying there was a thing promoted in the city council documents that basically says that, uh, it would be done by the city council through a quorum vote.
But that was me for the amending it, putting that. That was, that was to test leaks, Crane.
Was it?
Yes.
Alright, alright. Well, congratulations. You've faced off CG.
Someone leaked it to Ursula.
Yep, I wonder who it could be?
Oh, what?
Oh, yes, uh, Solomon has leaked, uh, just everything.
We're firing Ursula, just to be clear, right? She's fired. Great, I'm on board with that.
Considering there's the possibility that she was involved in the first place, which we really haven't even dug into, plus, uh, this now, yes.
I just wanna say I really hate that we are meeting in the unfinished room. It is the only unfinished room in the entire place. Can we please go over on the couch? I hate this. Thank you. So, yeah, no, it should be on the docket publicly. We should go through a whole ass trial for impeachment and it should be out sooner rather than later, but who are we gonna have to prosecute impeachment, Crane? What are your thoughts and ideas on that? Cuz we don't have DAs or state attorneys.
Hire someone who agrees with the case.
Well, our current first choice is, um, currently undergoing surgery because he has, was kidnapped and tortured and left for dead in the ocean today. But was luckily found. I'm most likely to be in the ICU. You're real? You're those kidnapped and tortured today.
What the shit?
His leg was almost removed. He was covered in cuts. I wonder who could've done this.
Alright, so great question I have is can we spin this that we drop the impeachment and then it'll happen via other means so that we don't all get killed?
Well, it never happened. There never was an impeachment.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
But can we, yeah, can we all agree to spin it that way, that we just decided not to do it?
You posted, uh, the impeachment reasoning there.
Murphy.
When we knew he had access to all of this, I don't know why any of that happened, but we still proceed. That, we can't just let him keep getting away with this, so we need to impeach him.
If it's clear as day that he was involved in the shooting that happened, then why is this difficult?
Yeah.
It's clear as day is different than beyond a reasonable doubt. It's also different than preponderance of the evidence.
Okay.
We also can't continue to be compromised though.
So, since we're not impeaching Solomon, should I call him right now, Alan, and invite him to the meeting?
He was invited to this.
Well, I just wanna make sure. You know what I mean? Should he be here for this?
Sure, why not?
I mean, yes, but, okay, I got his fucking, I got two of his numbers too. I'll give it a try.
Yeah, you, you try, Kandor.
I sincerely doubt he'll be, to be honest, we don't even know if he's fucking out of the ICU. We think he is on this floor.
He is.
He is, alright.
I seen him.
You saw him?
So he is out and about. He just isn't fulfilling his duties by informing us of his unavailability. So yet another reason. And now we have the leaking. We have more reason than ever to impeach him. Uh, he is leaking information, uh, he is just not showing up without a word and also all of the things to do with the shooting. I think that we post this and we trial.
Isn't it, isn't it grounds for impeachment if you are not showing up?
That would be the dereliction of duties.
It could be, yeah. We've got quite a lot of things we can stack against him.
I mean, it...
Let's be serious, he hasn't done shit.
No.
No.
And he isn't, yeah, he's not communicating his unavailability at all and he is not answering at all.
Well, I mean, heard that was the case with his bar license too.
Heyo!
Uh, so it seems like there's a trend here. Let's get him on dereliction. Fuck it.
He's in the same schedule that we've all got, that he...
He had every opportunity to be here.
That he could've let us know, uh, if he needed it to be a different time.
Cornwood was able to do so yesterday.
I've been able to do so before. Many have before. Uh, let's just say, let's not do leak tests anymore.
Okay, that's fine, but this is my thoughts on impeachment, articles of impeachment. My thoughts are that we actually introduce them on whether or not it should go to the docket here.
It should, like ever before.
Like we just vote on whether or not we want them to, and then yes, I do agree, Alan. We go to the docket, we do it the right, we do it the old fashioned way, the way it was done before, and we hire somebody, but that we start the process here. Do you disagree? Do you think that's problematic? Thoughts, concerns, comments?
The only thing that is difficult is that in the past overseen by the senate.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't have a senate, so I don't really know.
No senate.
Senate.
No senate. The, the, the state?
Question mark?
Yeah, I mean, like, we're gonna have to come up with how this works, cause it's like, you know, it's pretty clear that it's gonna happen one way or the other.
Typically, the, it was a panel of judges in the past and then a senator sort of weighed in. I'm sure that panel could run their findings by the state and the state could affirm or deny.
So, yeah, we're gonna impeach that mofo. Let's hire somebody to get some shit on the docket. Any ideas on who we wanna hire?
Probably somebody expendable.
Yeah, that's honestly not.
You know who's, you know who's back in town?
Who?
McNeigh. Fucking McNeigh doing it. Yes, 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 yes.
He's expendable.
He's absolutely expendable.
The littlest judge, the littlest judge. He's so short. Great, great, great.
He's a harder target, cause he can duck easier.
Yeah, he can duck super easy.
He's a small man, we're fine.
Small hitbox. Yeah.
Alright, um, I asked if he was available for contract work.
Fuck, yes.
Contract work? Oh my god, I can't, oh, Arthur McNeigh, perfect. You know what, and if he gets killed, it's two birds one stone.
Oh, great fucking choice.
Didn't McNeigh participate in one of the impeachments before? Abdules? Wasn't he involved in Abdul's impeachment back in the day?
Think so.
I believe so. So he's, he's a good one to be involved this time. Perfect, he's got prior experience.
Those are my favorite cases.
Alright.
Way better than the Emma Gane impeachment. Great.
Okay, that's pretty.
So I, I just wanna clarify, Crane, you said that uh, you don't believe it was beyond a reasonable doubt that uh, Psalm was involved in this shit?
No, I said, your characterization of it being plain as day is not a legal standard and I've yet to see anything presented in court where someone can challenge the veracity of the evidence on the other side.
Okay, no, I was just clarifying to that, cause you might know shit that I don't know.
No, I don't know anything, which is the point, and much like myself, the public probably is in the same position, so that's why we have, you know, public trials so that people can hear the evidence.
What are your thoughts?
Uh, I agree. Okay, so, I think right now we could impeach him based on dereliction of duty, just straight up. Don't even need a court case. Uh, the, the, the power to impeach is, is the, the councils. It's not a judges. It's not the peoples.
Do you want it to be more like a vote of no confidence from within?
Yeah.
Is that what you're hoping for?
Yeah, cause in, in theory, all of us elected officials, we represent the people, like collectively, right?
Right.
So why, why would we, why complicate the process when, you know?
It's, it's a valid point because the term may be over by the time it is proven beyond a reasonable doubt that Solomon did, did the stuff that, look, let's just, let's just say, we all know.
Lost so much time.
Look, I traded the trenches for lace curtains a long time ago, but there's no reason a street gang would claim responsibility for a shooting so that another group was not credited for it unless that person had some, some shit to do with, with the reason it happened. You know what I'm saying? Like, the fact he got shot and it was claimed by ADMC, that's the smoking gun to me.
I don't disagree. Uh, it will look terrible publicly though if we do this. Like I, I think there's a reason why it has to go through the docket normally and everything. I know we have a lot.
What do you, what do you mean impeachment is ours?
It doesn't specify where.
We haven't had a meeting in weeks.
And we're not even doing it at city hall, cause we're worried about shit.
We can't, yeah.
You wanna interview Nancy Hawk? Oh, I don't handle name changes. You gotta go above me for that.
The question is, can we afford to weigh out the process?
Yeah.
Oh.
Wait, why not have this, have impeachment be a super majority required?
That's what, I mean, that's what I was writing out.
Sorry, what did I miss?
Have impeachment handled internally and have it be required that it's a super majority. Like, why, why, why can we not police ourselves? I don't even imagine that there could possibly be an elected city council or appointed city council that would ever, ever be dysfunctional enough to vote themselves out one by one. I don't think that is a reality that could ever happen.
Because, because this is why we have, I mean, this is like civics 101, right? You, you have legislative and judicial and legislative doesn't, like, uh, I don't know.
So we're, we're just supposed to like, hang out with someone who like tried to get us all killed and succeeded in one of our cases for the next however many weeks?
I think that it makes sense uh, to go with the full legal route that it has been in the past, but what if, I don't know, you know, we talked about suspending him, what if we make that official? What if he is actually removed temporarily by a vote from the council until that can proceed? Anyway, we, we don't have to have him here. He, he can't sign in and see our shit, but it gives it time for the legal process to play.
What's her legal standing to suspend somebody with no articles of impeachment introduced and no charges on the docket?
Uh, what's our legal standing to just impeach him right here?
We have articles of impeachment in the constitution.
Well, well, basically what's happening is you're just, you're, you're doing the same thing, so you might as well just impeach him.
But they can be reinstated the moment he's found to be, you know, not liable or whatever it is, or not needed to be impeached. It, it's not a permanent removal.
My concern is that there isn't actually enough evidence to render a guilty verdict, and then where are we?
But it isn't, uh, it is an illegal case. It's, yeah.
You guys are thinking, you're thinking too far forward. Dereliction of duty. He's not alerted any of us that he's out of the ICU, if he is at all.
True.
Which I think he is, cause he leaked that fucking document, right? Obviously can't prove that. He's not here today despite being invited.
You might be able to prove it.
I mean, we should just George Santos him like Congress did. Vote to expel a member. Legislative action.
I do not trust him.
I think that the power to impeach each other should be internally in the council. I think that it can be moderated. I think that requiring a super majority would make it uh, a safe thing to do. I don't think we need to have a court case involved to determine whether or not we should impeach somebody. Like you guys said, I think it bogs down the process. I think we can impeach him based on dereliction of duty. So, let's do it.
Yeah, I feel, I feel like you could just do that shit if you wanted to.
And if it's gonna have to go to court, then like literally it needs to go to court between now and the next council meeting. Like, it just has to. We can't afford to just keep letting ourselves be compromised over and over again. I have a lot of concerns, but that's pretty much it. It would just have to go to court, like, immediate. That would be, in that course of action, that would be my urgency.
I'm kind of on the same page. Uh, I could go either way on it, but it needs, it needs to be done fast. I mean, at this point, we have Changang threatening World War III because he leaked shit. Like, we can't let that continue.
Um, let, let's be clear. They're threatening World War III if we impeach him. So I'm gonna be honest with you. If we do not take action to impeach him, I feel like it looks like, it appears that because of the narrative they have now spun, that we are capitulating to their demands. Yes.
Yes.
And that makes the government look weak.
No, yeah, I'm not about that. Fuck them. I'll go fuck them.
Are we?
No, god, no.
Okay, let's, let's do a vote to impeach Solomon Walker on the uh, basis of dereliction of duty. It'll go me and then Glenn, and then we'll go around, okay? Uh, I'm done talking about this. Uh, I vote yay.
So he hasn't contacted me at least, uh, nor in any of our scheduling. And uh, on top of that, um, you know, there are some allegations, the thing have been leaked, but that's, that's a whole different thing. All that being said, I would feel more comfortable if we were like voting to suspend him or something, but voting to actually impeach him, like actually he just is impeached, to me doesn't seem right, so I vote no, but I guess my vote doesn't matter on this one.
I'm, I'm looking at like report, update history shit. He hasn't updated a report for city council documents in at least twenty-five days and
They're outside. What's the occasion for this party?
Being said, um, yeah, I don't know, doesn't matter what I think.
It do, it does matter.
Alan, it does matter what you think, and I understand your concerns. I do, I do. I really, really do, okay? I get, I get giving people the opportunity to defend themselves against malicious accusations and, and universal application of the law. I, I really do.
Yeah, but, but what was, so I'm, I'm just a liar now. I told, I told Ursula that there wasn't gonna be any secret impeachment.
That is, that's true.
So I'm just a liar now.
How could you have known? You're not a liar.
That's why I pitched the suspension until then, but I, look, I, I can't say no. This, this is an unfortunate position and this will fuck us more.
Who fucking cares if they think you're a liar, Alan? Who cares? Ursula was in on it. You know, maybe not, may, maybe we can't prove that yet, but she was. Who fucking cares what Changang thinks? They already threatened World War III if we impeach this guy. Who, the ADMC, his gang doesn't fucking care. They blooded him out. Barry Benson did it himself. He's the leader of ADMC. The people target us and they target the police because they are easy targets. They are always going to be malcontent, every time. There's nothing we could do to make them truly unequivocally happy. I, I don't think it's possible. So we should, it doesn't, who, who cares if we lie? Who cares?
Well, I mean, I don't think we should be lying, you know, but.
I'll always vote with impeachment, but we, we should, I don't know.
Do you think due process could be accelerated on this?
I think, I think.
So that there is good faith in our institutions and the people do see and get transparency on it.
Sure, why not? We've done it for every trial every one of your clients has ever had, so.
Look, in my opinion, we voted to impeach him, that's just to, when we, the vote to impeach, right? Okay, in my mind, is, this was to send it to trial, right?
Okay. Alright, so Crane.
Establish where we're at with it.
Yeah, exactly.
Where I landed, which is this is a vote for suspension and we still continue with the posting and go with what is found then.
I'm cool, I'm cool, I'm cool with it being a suspension.
Okay.
Cool.
I'm cool.
But he should have his keys and MDT access removed in that suspension. That's my caveat. He can't fucking keep leaking this shit.
Let's do, let's do a cheeky little re-vote on suspension, okay?
Okay.
I vote to, should we, should we set a time limit, like two weeks?
Just be suspended pending impeachment.
Pending, pending impeachment trial.
Alright.
Oh, yeah, sure.
For the, for the purpose of determining whether or not Solomon Walker should be suspended pending investigation, I, the mayor of Los Santos, vote yay.
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 Absolutely yay.
Yay.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Yeah, I, I think this will be more palatable, this, uh, CG's gonna be mad either way, but fuck them, so uh,
Are they, are they playing loud music outside? Is that what that is?
Can I prosecute?
I don't hear it. You're heavily conflicted, I feel.
Yeah, that's biased.
I, I don't know, I, you know, it'd be funny, but maybe not.
No, I'm not, I'm not, okay, hold on, sorry, bad timing. Uh, it doesn't have to be this case. Alan, in general, can I prosecute?
Didn't we agree that you, I'm, I'm not even clear at this point anymore.
Exactly, that's, I'm not clear either. That's why I'm asking.
I thought we agreed that you didn't, you weren't gonna do criminal actions, or was it the other way around? I forget.
It was no criminal act, well, no, cause you told me I could do cell rep, so, yeah.
A lot of people is gathering around.
Uh, what incentives would there be? How would we track that? Um, would they be signed in SPD? Would it, like, what would they have? Would they be given weapons? If so, would they just be robbed off them? I, I cannot think of any way why this would work, to be, to be perfectly honest. I think, I think it is a very bad idea. I think that if we do DOC, uh, we should look within the public, uh, and assess that we uh, or announce that we are looking.
Alright, well, I'm just gonna say something here. So first off, the whole reason why uh, I even did the Carmine and Bobby idea in the first place was because Max and I literally asked the state if there are any plans for DOC and they said no.
Alright, well, there you go.
Hmm, fancy that. Constant communication with the state.
So, uh, I don't even know if we are capable of mandating, uh, I don't, I don't fucking know anymore.
I, I think we should go all in. I think we should go all in, bro. Fuck this shit.
You just say fuck the prison completely?
No, 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 I, I, all in, all in on not questioning our authority. We are the authority.
I'm gonna have a cigarette.
I mean, we are, there is no senate, it's the council now.
I think for DOC, you need people who care. I don't think random sheriffs will care.
I think there is no positive to sending PD into the prison to just work there because maybe someone would be sent up. To me, that makes no sense. I think they should continue working their position in the places that matter and we can leave the prison to rot.
Can't, they're kinda based right now, dude.
What's up? You wanna shoot?
Do not cross the barrier. Do not cross the barrier. Not crossing the barrier.
Let's go, bro.
Yeah, let's get it.
What the fuck going on?
They ain't even, they ain't even all time.
Let's move on this house, though.
Bro, if it all, if it all run at the house, they can kill us. Get the party rocking, baby.
Stay off the roof. Please leave the roof.
No.
Can't shoot me for going on a roof. Can't shoot me for going on a roof.
The house is our roof right here.
Wow, let's go, guys.
Guys, get off the roof.
Right now, this private property.
Off that music, baby.
Oh my god, the music's so loud, man.
The whole time mosh pit.
There's too many getting on the roof, guys. So many, there's so many people on the roof.
Yeah, absolutely. We need to arrest twenty-one people for trespassing.
Everybody's up here already.
Somebody attacked a cop, I think. Who's down?
We have a cop down?
There's a downed officer. There's a downed officer.
Who's the downed officer?
It was right next to the.
It's Wade.
I'm about, I'm about to just rush him with my baton. You ready? Back me up, I got pistol.
Yeah, I got you.
Oh shit. Frost is down.
Frost is down too.
Y'all need to leave, you're gonna be attacked right now. An officer down, okay? I'm gonna hurt y'all. Y'all need to leave, okay? Come on. I don't wanna hurt y'all. Y'all need to leave, okay? Come on.
We'll hurt you, no.
Make this, man.
We'll hurt you, no.
You guys take this, I'll damn.
What you gonna do? You gonna shoot him?
You guys shoot that, stop hurting.
Man, disaster.
One.
Fuck, I can see you fucking down.
Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. You will now be detained. You will now be apprehended. You will now be beat down.
For their own property. I mean, they can't do anything. We're all cool inside. Yeah, true.
We are. We don't want to be trapped here or not.
Oh, you guys can, you guys can stay over.
If y'all want some real action, we just shoot from inside here. Somebody's gonna hear shots and they're gonna lose their shit.
Cornwood, you're insane.
Hell, yeah. I like your thinking.
Door's open?
It's, it's rad, it's just rad, it's rad. No, you shot me, that's on me there, honestly.
It's all good.
Things are better. The roof's clear. We pushed him back off the property.
How was your smoke, Alan? Was it good?
Alan, can you open the door?
Really? Right now?
Yeah.
With all of that, you want me to open the door?
Sure.
Yo.
Hello?
Yeah, yo, if something goes down, are we shooting?
Oh, I'm to your right.
Yep, if, if they start shooting, we, we kill them.
Okay, I don't, I don't got a piece, but my boy's on a roof watching from afar, yeah?
We're gonna have two oh five. We're gonna have uh, Siobhan coming out of the house as well. They're armed, they're coming out front, but they, they could be threatened, so just, heads on a swivel, here's the ball.
Freaky bastard.
Don't you dare. Don't you dare. Don't you dare.
Hey, relax, relax.
Put that wrench away.
Don't you dare.
Don't, put that wrench away. Put that wrench away.
Put your baton away. Put your baton away.
Put the wrench down, listen to your tech.
I'm gonna get my motorcycle.
No, you're not. You need to contain. Hands bound your back.
What the fuck? Um, I don't know what the fuck.
What?
Give me a grenade, I'll clean this whole bitch up.
I wish I had one, bro.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, you got any comments?
Um, yeah.
What do you think about the socioeconomic climate?
Of what, of where?
Political, uh, theoretical, uh, scenes. Hell, yeah.
Step out the house with that jacket on.
What you repeating on this music clan right now and why isn't my music?
What'd you just say, bitch?
You heard me, fuck boy who let you step out the crib with that jacket on.
Listen, listen here, you got, you got a vest that don't match, you got a red armband, you got some lame ass chains on, you got you got a fucking military helmet, bro, you don't match. It is Gotham. What are you talking about? I got a bunch of hooligans dancing in front of my house right now. You guys, you guys are welcome to be here, um.
Thank you.
Uh, I, we've been waiting three weeks to have an actual council meeting and it's been pretty tough. Um, and the music is making it pretty hard to have the council meeting, so I mean, you guys are welcome to be here, if you'd like. Uh, I do.
I think you should ask the people who are doing the music.
Okay. Excuse me. The microphone's making it really hard to have a council meeting right now.
Oh, there's, oh, there's a council meeting.
Yeah, uh, three weeks.
Oh, we've been planning this concert for four weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Urlecker, this is uh, this is public property, though.
Yeah, we're just out here in the field, overlooking the beach.
Okay, no, this, this is my property. You know, you know that, right?
No, 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 your property, doesn't it end at the driveway, right?
You live on the grass?
Uh, wait, 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 hold on. I'm sorry. Are you a judge?
No, 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 but.
Are you a lawyer? Are you a, are you a police officer?
Just because I know my rights.
You don't know your rights, motherfucker. You don't think this is my law, you're stupid.
To take a stand, everybody. Come take back.
Lazar, Lazar.
Listen to me. Listen, guys, I don't mind, I don't mind if you're here.
Hey, put the.
He will not divide us.
He will not divide us.
I, I'm not trying, guys, you can be here. I don't mind if you're here, okay? Just keep the music down so we can have our meeting. We haven't been able to have a council meeting for three weeks. I will give you back your microphone, okay? Look, just no music.
Give us a mic, fool.
I need you to stop playing the music.
And put your baton away.
Because we are unable to, we are unable to have our meeting if there's music blasting in our, uh, at our house.
I think that's a polito purr, fool.
Okay, well, what was like a, what was like a little fart, huh?
No, like, if you can do it across the street.
Hey, maybe you should have it at the courthouse where it belongs, you know?
Okay, uh.
You see my boys on lately?
The, the last meeting we had at the courthouse, it was shot up.
Oh, by who?
That's so unfortunate. That's crazy.
We're getting twenty-five K fines for littering.
I have no idea what you're talking about, man.
Um, I dedicate this song to Siobhan.
Oh, look, she's right there.
How, how are you singing and talking at the same time? One, two? Why are you doing this? Yeah, I could, I see that. I did, I didn't touch the microphone. You literally can see when someone is doing it. I did not, I did not move. Uh, okay, guys. I don't know.
Hey, the polito perv took it, that shit.
Oh.
This is crazy.
They don't have authority up there.
You guys should uh, read the constitution. The first paragraph probably says enough.
I'm gonna get the microphone and announce it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Indeed, I, I, it's literally in my MDT profile. I own this property.
Everybody, everyone, I'mma send you a document. Read the constitution. They have no authority up here whatsoever. Everyone get your phones.
So what you're saying, beat his ass if he takes the mics or what?
They have no authority up here. They're doing illegal activities as we speak. This has been exposed by Lord Soze, ex-leader of the troopers. Everyone read as you please. This is Los Santos constitution and this is not a part of Los Santos.
Yeah, Carlos Santos.
Give our goddamn microphone back.
Oh, I literally do not have the microphone.
You are, people, take up arms and defend our land because you have no right to be here.
Take up arms, fool?
It's true. Bad.
We need more PD on the eastern side. Uh, there's a lot of people gathered on the commish, just in case.
Hey, hold on.
We need to have the one unit thing on the roof, though, Pete.
Okay, I might get a shot by what I just swatted. I'm going inside.
Uh, yellow.
Uh. You guys are actually still talking about shit?
Uh, I mean, I, I asked her nicely to not play her music. Uh, I have some guy wannabe gangster telling me that my property line, he's trying to tell me where my property line is. It's the whole thing.
Wait, but how do you have property lines if there's no jurisdiction out here?
I don't know.
Wait, hold on. Didn't you buy your property from the state?
Yeah.
But wait, the account that we manage is the state account.
Yeah.
But, but how's that work?
I don't know.
Also, did Davis win the presidency? What nation is Sose talking about?
I don't know. I don't know.
What if we secretly?
Also, what are we gonna do about those signs that say it's $25,000 to litter and polito?
I just wanted to have a council meeting, Alan.
Signs that contradict everything that we put in legislation.
Alan, I just wanted to have a council meeting.
Yeah, me too. Well, I just wanted to have a council, but you know. So, uh, is there more on the agenda?
Yeah. There's a lot on the agenda.
I'll make my way back. Who the fuck are you saluting? Oh, given that bar licenses are state bar licenses, I don't know if I have the power to give those out. Wait, maybe the courts are totally invalid. Are taxes valid?
Hey, fuck you, Thow. Fuck you, Thow.
Hello?
Hey, what's going on, Crin? Um, why is President Davis being tweeted? It's, uh, Knight.
Uh, oh, I'm using his name to, uh, mock some sovereign citizens.
I, I got you. Look, um, Crin, uh, I, I still work for him, so, um, are you asking for him or are you putting his life in jeopardy?
Well, there's gonna be, uh, an impeachment of a city council member and maybe a representative from the state would be a good thing.
Uh, from the president?
Well, I mean, the state seems to be unsure if they exist at this point in time, so that existential crisis, uh, you know, may beget need for federal involvement.
Look, I, I'm gonna be honest with you, Crin. If I mention Los Santos to him, I think the man's gonna drop a nuke on the place.
Yeah, that sounds about right. I mean, we might need one at this point.
All right. Well, uh, let me know if you need him.
All right.
All right.
Fucking many.
Who's that?
Brian Knight, AKA the other half of the brain trust with Axel Justice, uh, then, uh, commissioner who, uh, decided it would be prudent to strap a bomb to an EMS uh, and send them into a terrorist holdout under the guise of bringing them food.
So why, uh, why did he call you?
Oh, uh, he must have one of those like alert thingies, uh, where it like tells him when, uh, uh, Senator Davis's name gets mentioned.
Hmm.
Cause, uh, Knight called me and said, I heard you were talking about Davis. Are you putting his life in jeopardy? What's going on? And I said, no, I'm just pointing out that we may need the federal government because the state doesn't seem to know if they exist or not.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then he stated.
Tanker, tanker, tanker on scene. They're getting a tanker, they're getting a tanker, they're getting a tanker.
Take cover, take cover.
Take cover, take cover, take cover.
They're gonna shoot that shit.
They're probably gonna try and use it as an explosive device.
Can we disable the driver? Can we disable the driver?
On the other side of the street, on the other side of the street. Oh, they ran over Siobhan.
Open fire in that semi.
He dropped the tanker. He's still continuing. Face is out. All right, they don't have a tanker attached. Don't shoot the driver. Don't do that.
He's still operating secure.
I'm sure the tar is right now.
I brought her inside the house.
He's running, he's running, he's running.
He's right, yeah. Be gray in color sedan. He's in the SWAT truck.
No, you're trying to do. At my location, white guy, BBC. Let me see some fucking hands. What the fuck are you doing?
Uh, what are you doing?
Shooting somebody, raise somebody over, okay?
I'm just gonna kill people.
Oh, don't do it, ah!
What else is there to do?
So if we're gonna have World War Three, does that mean World War Four will be with sticks and stones?
Well, I mean, this probably won't be a nuclear war. I don't have a nuke.
I don't think anybody does.
Or not, just say you do and everyone will have to believe it.
Gary, you're gonna take the chance.
I have a nuke. Wow. I have a nuke. Cool.
And I will use it, bro.
We don't have laws against nukes, so whoopsie.
Fuck.
If, there's, it's just sovereign citizens.
Red Harrington is fucking dead?
Yeah, Red Harrington is dead.
Wait, Red Harrington died?
Red Harrington died today.
Uh, he was in the ICU, uh, and, uh, they, they lost him.
What the hell?
That was a stand-up guy.
I've known Red for such a long time.
Someone, can someone notify Solomon that he's been suspended?
I'll text him.
Just add him in the email.
Oh, yeah, I would do it on the email.
Just do it publicly. No need, no need.
Yeah, yeah, I would do that.
I don't want to do that in email because there's reasons.
I texted him.
Okay.
You're suspended.
Because, for example, Max, you were not around for this, but the last time, uh, a mayor was asked to be impeached, uh, someone literally tried to subpoena the emails and wanted like every email from the mayor's email service, uh, entered into evidence. And he wanted nothing redacted.
Yeah.
So that's why we don't do that anymore.
Fair point.
Where are her laptops?
Alan, I know you're saying someone, but I'm pretty sure it's, it is who I think it, we're talking about Emma, right?
Is that Kitty?
Okay.
No, we're talking about your, uh.
Veronica, hello.
Secretary of.
I know, we're, we're talking about first, yes.
Is there anyone injured here?
No, we're good. Uh, yes, my, uh, faith and motivation has been decimated.
We'll be outside if anything, uh, happens. We appreciate you. Okay, no problem.
Thank you very much.
I have removed Solomon's, uh, privileges, MDT and otherwise. Uh, someone needs to, I don't know, that vote needs to be memorialized somewhere and it needs to be published somewhere. Well, if somebody wanted to make the suspension, you know, initiative.
I'll do the suspension vote one. I'll do it.[1651.12]